I'm gonna have to move it. Yeah, I'm gonna have to move it.
Let's call this meeting to a order. I want to thank everybody for attending to our second workshop. It's nice to see everybody here. I would ask for a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
That's approved.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Now, we have Darrell Gales here from the County Administrative Service to tell us about the SDS. And he's a very busy man, so we're gonna have him first. And Darrell, welcome.
Well, I guess first of all, is what part of SDS would you like me to start with?
Well, the one that's going to benefit Sky Valley.
Well, basically, the SDS for the people who, no, I'm sorry. Basically, the SDS for the people who know is basically the services that the city offers. And what it offers is basically what the county offers in your area. It is our point of view with the service delivery strategy at this point is that there's one or two ways we can either go about it. Now, we can get some clarification from my understanding, you guys just want some clarification. I will have Adam Mazel there tomorrow to kind of clear some of that up for you guys because, and that's one of the reasons I brought Jimmy here as a former county administrator, is because he's got some history there with you guys on how the fire department up here was funded and this, that, and the other. But from the county's position at this point in time, if you guys want to offer those services yourself, then, you know, we will look at rolling those taxes back to your people and let you guys provide the service. And that's basically what we will be telling all the cities tomorrow in the SDS meeting. You know, I'm not specific, I'm more aware of how the city of Clayton and what we're offering them, but I know that you guys all have the, basically, the numbers, and these look a little, I've had them out so much lately that they're a little wrinkled, but these are numbers as to usage for each service, the ones in Highland and Gallows, the city of Clayton, because they're the ones that we're usually talking to and take up most of the time at our meetings, but there's uses, there's services that we have here that are mandated by law or statute of law, most of your court services that we have to provide, fire, EMA, dispatch, overlapping in law enforcement, and overlapping of fire services are stuff that the county offers inside the city of Sky Valley. Inside Sky Valley does their own water, they have their own water system up here, they maybe in the future, hopefully, their own sewer system and some stuff goes live for them, and, but we're basically saying, hey, what we got out there is what we got out there, and if you guys are willing to move on, we're willing to move on with it. If there's some taxing equities or double taxation in areas that we, you know, we're willing to roll those taxes back and let you guys take over that service. So, that's mainly hit in a nutshell. I don't, I ain't got anything else to add to that, and it's basically the same thing we're telling the other cities. So, and if the city of Clayton wants to take on their own services with inside, then we'll roll back those taxes to those citizens and form a special tax district with the cities involved that want to move on. And at this point, I think that we have Little Falls, Tiger, Mountain City, and Dillard are on, let's move on with it. Because if you don't have an SDS in place, then through the state you cannot receive grants. There's free money sitting there, and I don't know what Sky Valley's allocation for the L-MIG, Local Maintenance Improvement Grant, which is just low fruit hanging, that's free money that we can pick off, and, I mean, that money's not available to us either. So, orphaned grants for parks, trails, anything that's state-funded, we're not qualified yet, so we would just like to get that back in status, that qualified status back. Also, down the hill here at the Development Authority Building, the, there's a grant there that basically gives them a tax break on new employees at the plant. And he's saying if we can help him out a little bit with that, then it could be an additional hundred jobs in Raven County. And these jobs are not high-skill set jobs, they're not, they're not jobs that you have to have an engineering background or any kind of background to do it. It's basically, you know, if you can package a box, then, then you're qualified to work here. So, that helps, to me, that helps the people of Raven County out tremendously. You know, you don't, there's no skill set that you have to have, it's basically get in here, and I want that, that's, because every time you hear either for, not specifically Sky Valley, but for the county commission, is they want economic development, we want to bring jobs to Raven County, well, we've got a hundred jobs sitting there right now that we can go after, and if we, he's gonna provide a hundred, but if we can give him some tax incentives, he'll, he'll provide another hundred jobs. So, that gives us incentive to want to work this SDS and get it signed and move forward. And our, and I'm not saying I agree with this group, the SDS consultants, that there are some inequities and there are some double taxation in some areas, but I think once you look at the whole, the big picture, I think that our inequities and stuff, there are inequities on our behalf as well. And, you know, we're willing to do, we're willing to look at those, if you want to address those, then that's fine. If you guys want to provide that service, that's fine with us too, we'll roll that tax back out and provide that service. So, that's about it, and I don't know exactly what you're wanting to hear, but that's kind of the SDS for us in a nutshell. And I could go on and on and on, and you'll never know where you're at, but it revolves around the services that your community offers and what the, and then what the commission offered, or what the county offered. Is there any questions that you?
Any questions over here? You cry?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Debbie Dalpous, I live at Denver's Lane, and I was wondering if you rolled back those taxes and we need county assistance, what happens then?
You would call upon your city to get that.
And if the city is not able?
If for that particular service, can you say that?
For example, the county helped us out with some roadwork that we needed. If you rolled back the taxes that we pay for roads and we needed road help, what happens then?
Your city would be providing that.
No help from the county. We need to be sure we understand that, no help from the county.
Before, before, but in the past, now, I'm gonna say, in the past, though, that we have worked very good with, because we have Bald Mountain Road that goes up that cuts some of the city, and I know Linda has worked very, very good with the county, and the council has worked very good with the county to take care of us. And it's, I think it's worked fine. Sky Valley's quiet, we, I mean, I'm telling you, they do a good job, they take a lot of responsibility for what they have inside their city limits. And, quite frankly, I mean, they hardly call us for anything. And I'm, I'm just being honest with you, that's, but, you know, if they call for us for help, if you're in the snow or something like that, I mean, phone line's always open if y'all need us to add gravel or carry something up, and if y'all are in a pinch, then.
I'm sure an emergency situation is cooperating.
Yes, and in our emergency situations.
I know our police is helping situations.
That's right. You have, you have to have overlap there and that.
I'd like to speak to Debbie's point real quick, Debbie. They don't provide us any services within Sky Valley for road help.
There was dirt that was delivered on Alpine Drive, yes, tons of field dirt that were delivered, and without that field dirt, there were drop-offs of 12 inches in places.
So, was that, was that all provided free of charge by the county, Linda?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, that was, that was a concession a little bit because of the SDS situation. I mean, that's not something that they would normally do for us, but because we're in the situation wherein, we were able to.
One of the things is, I told Linda on this, and I said, listen, where we have our dirt and stuff, I realize that there's some kudzu and stuff, so don't shoot the.
Yeah.
We try to keep, we try to keep.
Or something out there.
We try to keep some of that stuff out, but, you know, where we pick up a lot of that material and stuff, we don't mind doing it or helping where we can, and even to an extent, I mean, if you got, or if Linda called us and said, listen, we don't have the ability to do something, then I don't think that we would completely shut, shut you guys off. But, I say that to say, since I've been, and of course Jimmy could, Jimmy's my predecessor, or he's my, I'm his predecessor, is that right? Or he's my predecessor. Anyway, I think Jimmy could probably speak to the fact, since I've been here for two years, the city of Sky Valley has asked us for very, very little.
But if the taxes were rolled back and we needed additional field dirt?
For that particular service.
Then would we be billed, or would it just not be available at all?
Well, probably, I mean, if we did, it would be a contract as to where you guys would pay us for that.
Yeah, we'd have to wait for it, probably.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which would probably cost less than what we're paying now.
Relation.
If we had to buy it.
So, but, yes.
Jim Curtis, also Denver's Lane. I just got back in town. I read last week's Clayton Tribune, and apparently, the city of Clayton is saying that because they tax their citizens for their roads and county folks use their roads, they don't want to pay for county roads.
Yes.
And it seems like a very specious argument to me, but I, for the benefit of all of us here in this room, could you explain the county's position on that? Because I know that, I use the county roads all the time, we go exploring Raven County, we go fishing and hunting, and, you know, are they crazy?
Um.
Just your question.
We brought him up here for Sky Valley, basically, not to quiz him about other areas.
I can, I can give you a quick.
He can give you a.
I can give you a quick rundown on that, is basically, the taxes, their tax base is around $93 million, 40% assessed times our mill rate, we get around $840,000 of money from the city of Clayton, the city of Clayton property owners, who owns property in the city of Clayton, I'm sorry, I'm kind of, the city of Clayton also mills their people for, I think they roughly get around, I think there's 8.25, so they're, the money they get out of their millage rates for the property owners inside the city of Clayton for them is around $740,000. If, by usage rate, if you've, if you've come back through, and you haven't got these numbers, but these were numbers that, and that doesn't appear that I have them on, but roughly, the fire department, just the fire department use is around $240,000, the city of Clayton's part of that, just fire. It's not EMS, it's not dispatch, which would provide a GCIC service that's just for Clayton, where there are 7,000 or 6,000 of the calls coming to them. In our, in our viewpoint is that your, the bang for your buck is big. If you have to provide those services, just one of those services, and that's not all of them, that's just three of the big, then, you know, you're gonna have to provide a building, you're gonna have to get a EMS, a emergency vehicle to, and I don't know if you guys have ever priced a fire truck, you're letting, but they're around 300 to 500,000 dollars to pull one. And, you know, if you get a tanker, you're looking at half a million dollars. And, what we're saying is, is you're getting a free day going good bang for your buck to cut, for you to go out and provide just fire, you're gonna have to generate around $3 million in taxes. So, in order to generate $3 million in taxes, you're gonna have to move your, you know, your millage rate up to 35 to 40 mills, just to provide that one service.
Excuse me, Darren, how do you come up with that number?
Yeah, I just basically, I mean, 3 million, if they have to need $3 million, then whatever their mill rate is, you know what their property tax base is of 93 million, 40% of tax, 40% assessed rate times that, whatever that one mill is to get to 3 million, you know, one mill, I think, in their mill is just like $43,000, so.
Well, we currently provide our services for less than 60,000 a year.
But you're, you're not having to go in and, and, and you're not having to go in and build a firehouse.
Well, we have to, we have a firehouse.
I'm not talking about you, probably about the city.
They were talking about Clayton, they were talking about Clayton.
Right.
Your 60,000 a year is just what your, that's just your operational needs from your, your client, from the city.
Thank you for pointing out that.
We're talking about starting a brand-new firehouse from scratch.
Yeah, you have to start one from scratch, I got you, okay.
So. Darren, the question was about roads and rolling back contributions from the cities for roads, because the argument was that we didn't get anywhere we need to get just on state and federal roads.
Well, I mean, that's the same, they said they didn't use our recyclables, they didn't, they don't use our senior center, the kids that live inside the city don't use our rec department. And which it takes, you know, you have to get on a county road to use those facilities, I mean, I think it's an asinine approach to, in my opinion, that's just my opinion. I mean, because, hey, I can get on, I have to get on a county road to get to town, but I, I mean, only for two tenths of a mile, and then I get on a state route, and I get on a state route all the way into the city of Clayton. Well, I mean, I, I mean, I mean, I could make a fight that, but to me, the roads are good for all, for all. And the fact that they, they mill their, they mill their citizens for a, that's one of their services is roads, and they mill their people for that, why do they not want to provide that for the people inside the city of Clayton? Sky Valley does.
Yeah, we're two, we're two different entities.
Yeah.
Yeah, Clayton's a totally different.
Citizens within the county come into Sky Valley and use Sky Valley roads, Sky Valley citizens use county roads. However, Sky Valley contributes to Sky Valley's roads and to the county's roads. The county citizens only contribute to the county roads, they don't contribute anything to ours, so you, you've got an inequity here when you've got double funding for Sky Valley roads and single funding for county roads, but we have equal use. Does that make sense to you?
It does make sense, but I ask you to tell me what the numbers is on that. What, I mean, are we talking about $40,000, or were we talking about $5 million?
Were we talking about?
I mean, talking, you're talking about double taxation, I'm asking you, are you talking about $40,000? Because, that's what I'm saying, is I think these amounts are minute.
Well, I think we're talking according to the numbers we were given the other day.
Okay.
It was $19,941 per year.
Right.
For Sky Valley. So, in other words, that's what we're paying outside of Sky Valley, and of course, you're also, or that's what we're being billed for, roads inside of Sky Valley, excuse me, by the county, which Sky Valley maintains its own. So, it's in other words, I guess another analogy, Jim, would be, okay, you and I both own two different houses, you own one, I own the other, you help me pay for mine, you pay for half of mine, and I pay for the other half, but yet I can use your house, which you pay for all of by yourself. That's an inequity.
Well, I see the county folks that use the city of Clayton's roads.
Right.
As going in there to pay their money to Clayton merchants for goods and services, who then in turn pay taxes to the city and the county. Sky Valley is trying to get everybody to come up here and look at Sky Valley, because we hope they're gonna buy some of our houses.
Correct.
And for us to say that, you know, county people are getting to use our Sky Valley roads, and we don't, and we're paying for their roads, and they're not paying for our roads when they come into Sky Valley to go fishing or to see the sights or attend a festival, that just doesn't make sense. We want them to come to Sky Valley.
What about roads and subdivisions, Jim? What about roads and subdivisions around the county that aren't in an incorporated area? It's an unincorporated part of the county subdivision roads that the county maintains? How do you feel about, how do you feel about you paying, paying for those roads?
I don't know that we.
That's just part of being a good neighbor, Paul. That's part of the, part of, part of not being the rich people on the hill who've come up here and bought up all the great property in, in Raven County, and, you know, I don't think, I don't think people should look at us that way, as interested solely in ourselves. We need to contribute something to Raven County.
But my only point was, is that you can look at a map and look at county roads that less than folks use, and there's a spot to compromise in here. And there are areas that don't get used by part of anybody but county unincorporated folks, and so it becomes a taxing inequity there per the Georgia State law.
But is that inequity worth you guys fighting for? That's what I'm asking about.
No, I don't know.
Because we can roll that back if you don't want it. If it's $10,000 or $20,000, roll that back.
I think that one line item would be about, you know, $40,000.
But here's the deal, is that you guys were, in order for city of Sky Valley to be able to, we rolled that back to you citizens, and in order for the city of Sky Valley to receive that inequity, they then have to tax you again, go up on your mill, back up on your mill to receive that millage back into the city of Sky Valley.
I'm not.
So, it's not a savings to your people.
Again, if we were to lower Jim's tax bill.
But you gotta, how are you guys gonna get it?
If we were to lower Jim's tax bill on the county side by $200, and we raise his tax bill on the city side by $200, it's a net zero for Jim, but the county, but the city benefits and has more revenue to take care of these items that we take care of, such as our own roads, such as our own fire department. That was a question that I had, you know, with the city attorney in the last meeting, and he said, well, no, the county takes care of all of the fire for the city of Sky Valley. And I've asked the Scaly Mountain.
Say again? He said the.
The county pays, provides all of our services, and they pay, they pay Scaly Mountain for our services, but that's not true.
Oh, that's what he said, but that's not true.
No, it's not true. They don't even have an agreement, according to the Scaly Mountain Fire Department, Raven County does not even have an agreement with Scaly Mountain.
Well, are you guys willing to roll back all taxes and all, I mean, I mean, because that's the deal on the table, is that we can roll back all the taxes, and you guys can provide all your services to the people inside the city of Clayton, and, I mean, inside the city of Sky Valley.
So, the county proposing an all or no, all or nothing deal?
Well, I mean, I don't know, I mean, we're going down a road of about $15,000 or $20,000. I just say, is what the county, is what the county giving for you guys, or are you guys receiving enough services from the county, from the overlap from fire, from, from Dillard to EMS, EMA, and that's a big, and I guarantee you there's some inequities back towards you guys. Can, can I make a suggestion? We carry on this conversation with a smaller group of people to look at the numbers, I mean, where's this spinning our wheels for now?
Now, we're spinning our wheels.
Yeah, we are.
Okay, you can continue.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, I mean, EMS, I mean, you guys don't want to provide EMS.
No, we don't, no.
But I'm saying that is a huge cost. I mean, just a med back wagon, a deck on anguines, I mean, a remount's $275,000.
Yeah. We're having to include in all those services, that's.
That benefits you, but.
All or nothing.
Not really, yeah, but I mean, you're only wanting the ones that really, that's some inequity building from us back towards you guys, and you're wanting all the ones where there's inequable, inequable $20,000 or so back to, that's benefits the city. So, what we're saying is that we have, we're not agreeing that there's, we're not disagreeing that there's some inequity in some services, but we also have some inequities in some services too that we're providing. And does that number wash out?
Well, I think 911 is one of the things that y'all say, or you have an inequity on your side.
Dispatch.
Okay. And, and my challenge to that one is, we, when you dispatch 911 to our police department, you also say, having to send a deputy sheriff up here. In other words, if we.
But that's what you tax your citizens for, right? Is that not a service that you provide to your citizens?
The 911 system?
No, your police system, your police.
We, we do, but the inequity that I look at, or the way I hear the inequities are like 911. In other words, for every 911 call, if we did not provide a police department here, for every 911 call that came in, you would have to dispatch and pay for a deputy, a car, etc. to come up here and do that job.
Yes, I mean, it's dispatched inside the city, because that's the way it's set up, that's the way you guys are charging.
And, but the cost of that deputy, the car, and the operation is far greater than the telephone call of a 911. So, although you say it is 911 is an inequity, when you put the two together, the inequity is actually in reverse.
Well, so, what if you provided the whole dispatch service yourself? You set a building up, you had two dispatchers working in, you have your own GCIC service, you, I'm saying, look at the overall.
Nobody's proposing to do that.
Nobody's proposing to do that, but you can't.
But you're just throwing an hypothetical out there that nobody's even considered.
Why are we talking about it if nobody's?
I don't know.
Because 911 is one of the inequities that.
But you're talking about inequity, and if you're talking about inequity, you have to talk about providing service, and the county provides that service, that's what I'm trying to say.
We pay for that service, and we pay for that service.
I'm totally agreeing on this, I totally agree.
So, we're not arguing, we pay for that service in our county taxes at all, but we do say the dispatching of the officer, so.
But, but you do tax your citizens as well for that service.
We don't tax our citizens in the city. We do for police.
That's what I'm saying, is you have a police service that you're taxing your citizens for.
Exactly.
Because you have to have, how many services do you have to offer just to be a city? Do you know that? You have to offer three services. Police can be one of them, fire can be one of them.
What are you, what are we trying to do with this SDS?
We're just trying to get it signed and move on.
Are we trying to, are we trying to lower our taxes or pay more taxes for the services? Everything, the way I see it, everything's fine now.
Well, that's, I basically, I have the same look that, look out, or the outlook on it that you have, I, I think that everything's good. I think that what we're fighting over, by the time we pay these guys to come and sit down with us and say, oh, you have an inequity here, you have an inequity here, all right, well, listen, the county has an inequity back to you, I think the majority of this is gonna wash out. And this is nothing against you guys, I mean, because I understand, where are you coming from? I mean, because you say double taxation, you're saying a big word that, I mean, everybody perks up when you say double taxation. But we, we think that we have inequities too, and I think this thing's gonna be a big wash. And quite frankly, I think, I say again, and I say this, that the city of Sky Valley has always taken responsibility to do things inside their, inside their municipal boundaries, they have done a very good job of it, and we've never had an issue with them, with the city of Sky Valley. And that's the reason I don't know that this fight with the SDS is worth it in the end, in the end game. I just don't think the inequities that we're talking about. I just don't think the inequities that we're talking about is worth fighting over.
Well, can I ask you something? This service delivery strategy will be in place for ten years, unless it, something else triggers it.
Right.
If we were to only gain fifty thousand, roll back a year, over ten years, that would be half a billion for us. You know, that's not a small number for us. We are a little bitty city, and we do try to take care of a lot of things ourselves. And to hear you say that there's an offer on the table to all the municipalities, we're unique municipality up here, because we didn't take care of our, you know, fire, water. We run solid waste, we provide our own dumpsters for our citizens, we recycle, collect recyclables ourselves. So I think you'd agree, we provide more service, twice as many at least, than most of the other municipalities anyway.
But I mean, you can't expect us to keep that service up before rolling back that money.
We don't, yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
I understand that, and that will be spelled out in the strategy, correct? So that's, I think we're closer to getting it done.
I can also tell you that I don't think that if I was able to give these services to somebody else, because there's one or two things that I figured out in my time here, is if you wanna cut taxes, you cut services. If you have services, you're gonna continue to have tax for that service.
What do you see in the future, as far as services are concerned?
I see, here's a bit, man, if you want my, it's John Q. Public, if you want my opinion.
What I really like to know is what started all this? What is the-
Basically, the crux of this thing is, I mean, and we can, we can argue about this, I always want about twenty thousand dollars, or thirty thousand dollars, or whatever. It's gonna come down to water and sewer service area between the city and the county.
The city of Clayton.
City of Clayton, I'm sorry.
Well, I've had experience with EMS several times with my mother-in-law lived with us. And they were great. They'd come up here, they were here in no time. And our police cooperated with them too, as far as laying out, so they could fix this house. So I had no problem, EMS is great.
Well, you got mapping, also, you know, you think about EMS, you don't think about all the things that go along with it. I mean, you also have a mapping department, and you have a GCIS, I think I'm saying that right, I've got-
GIS.
GIS system that the county provides and mapping all these streets and stuff. So when you call nine-one-one or whatever, it pops up on the, the med units area, and they go straight to your house. That thing isn't cheap either. And we're continually, continually updating that system. The county has just spent another twenty-five thousand dollars, which is their portion, to remount the whole county. Basically, I think to fly the city, we're gonna fly the city of Sky Valley too, I'm thinking. But they'll fly from the GIS system, so we can better, make ourselves more efficient from the, not only from our tax assessment side, which people don't like to hear, but also from our med side. And those are things that the cities won't see either.
While you're on that subject, more and more people are going to cell phones and not landlines. How do y'all assess the location of a cellphone caller for nine-one-one? How do you figure out where they are?
You got me on that one, I haven't got any.
The answer is you can't.
I don't-
Yeah, the county has the technology to locate a cellphone within, I think it's less than a hundred yards.
They can ping it within a hundred yards?
Yes, less than a hundred yards.
I didn't know Jimmy had that capability, I hadn't been asked that question.
I didn't know we had that many towers up here to do that.
But that was, the technology, I understand what you're saying about how many towers you have, we don't have here. But county's invested a tremendous amount of money in technology to be able to locate people that are calling. They've located people near Raven Ball that were lost by their cell phone, and there's no, no set of coverage. They have, they have that type of technology in place.
And smartphones now use triangulation, and I can look at my daughter in Fort Myers, and I can tell you what room or apartment she's in right now.
I don't know that you could be that precise in Sky Valley. I don't mean to get off the surface.
No, I'm not, yes, sir.
What's the deadline for the SDS we signed before?
I'm not sure, I don't have the city attorney, that's gonna have to, that'll be on the-
Has the county given the cities a deadline?
No. We're actually hoping we can work through this thing and sit down. It doesn't have to be in front of a million people. In the past, it's never been in front of a million people who've worked through the SDS, because we've been able to work through that in a pretty quick fashion.
You said, I have to begin, this is pretty well all settled as far as the other areas go, and that you're gonna be talking at our next meeting on the twenty-first, more of the nitty-gritty of one Sky Valley area and the others. We're not gonna have the attorneys standing up and fighting back and forth then.
Man, I hope not. One of the things that I did is I went ahead and got Adam to say, oh, with the Georgia Mountain Regional Commission, who writes these, he writes these, the Georgia Mountain Regional Commission writes these for cities and counties. He's already got it booked up. As a matter of fact, I think, Linda, you might have received one last week to just look through that and see, because after all the talking we've done through the last two meetings, we had already done that three years ago with Adam, and I looked through it, and it looked like he had already had everything outlined, besides maybe the fire situation in Sky Valley, as to how-
It's a draft that we started on, yeah.
Did you get it done? No, I didn't get it done.
I was on the case, I'll send it.
It was, we just sent, we just sent it out last Friday, she probably hasn't had time to get back. But Adam will be here Wednesday, he is the SDS expert that works with Georgia Mountain Regional Commission. And I think we've used GMRC, or GM, yeah, GMRC to write those for us, years past, right, Jimmy?
And the updates.
And the updates, so.
I did email Adam back and said there might be some things that Sky Valley was gonna be, you know, talking to the county about, and he just asked if we could send him what those were at that point, I didn't know exactly what they were.
Okay, good.
He is aware of that, as far as, I think Little Falls, they were pretty good. I mean, they didn't really have much, I mean, basically it comes down to water and sewer. I mean, I'm just gonna, you got water and sewer, and water and sewer service area. And that's what's gonna be the biggie.
Well, good luck with it, because this is a really important issue, and there's a lot more dollars on the table for Raven County and all the municipalities, by having this agreement in place than any of the little inequities that I hear people talking about.
Well, just the county's loss of mill each year is four hundred and fifteen thousand.
Ours is thirty, we're losing thirty thousand a year now.
Sky Valley's is thirty, so. We are, we're losing, we're losing, that's just free money. I mean, we ain't gotta do nothing for that, but just, we put in centerline knowledge, and we get that money every year. So we've lost one point two billion in the years, because the SDS is not supposed, that's the county.
Well, everybody's, that's why.
Yeah, I mean, it's just- There's an argument over twenty thousand dollars, it's, I mean, but I understand your point.
Well, we thank you.
Yes, thank y'all. Thank y'all. Get up to you at some point in time, too. You wanna go with me, Rick? Good luck.
Thank you, everybody. You know, that's Cheryl, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Well, we have a sewer feasibility study presentation. And, where are they?
Right here.
Oh, there they are. If you wanna look, this is it, anybody wants to read it?
She'll put it online, right, Linda?
It's, yeah, it's been with online.
Well, good morning, it's a great morning to be in Sky Valley, it's beautiful up here. So probably many of you are aware that there has been discussion of getting sewer to Sky Valley for on and off since the nineties, and it's not an easy task, because you're so far away from any type of treatment facility, and putting a small treatment facility in the trout streams, discharging to a trout stream would be pretty costly. So it has been a task over several years. So twenty sixteen, EMI was asked to do another study, another feasibility study, in order to consider getting a sewer system up here. And there's several reasons that this interest is here. There is scaling septic systems in the lower areas any time. There's wet weather, or maybe torrent season, there's a lot of issues with septic systems. And from what I understand, septic systems have been moved and replaced, and there's even some fields at the golf course. And hotels and different developers have been interested in developing in Sky Valley, but you can't really develop too much when there is no major sewer service.
We're just talking about it in the main valley.
Just in the main valley, yes. Yeah, and just a quick description of how sewer goes. You run sewer downhill, and then when you get to the lowest spot, you can pump it out. But other than that, you can't go downhill and then back up uphill. So putting a sewer system in a mountainous area can be quite difficult. So, and the main region we were looking at is this magenta, kind of, the lodges here. Here's Sky Valley Way coming in, comes around here. The service area that we were looking at is mostly the developed areas, the highly developed areas, with all of the lodging, any type of small cluster homes, that type of thing. It would be really difficult, really costly to get it everywhere in the city. Not saying it's not possible, but that's not what this study looked at. It looked at just getting the main areas with the hopes of getting more businesses in here, maybe a hotel. I heard there's interest in getting a fifty-plus community, fifty, fifty-five and older community in here. The closest grocery store, he gives them down to get some.
All those citizens' tribes are already in our-
More friends, more friends in here. Okay, so there's been, there's been interest in getting a sewer system in here, so that's what this study looked at. The cost estimate came up to four point three million dollars. Mostly gravity sewer, these orange undergravity sewer, it would collect it to a lift station back here behind the lodge, and pump it five and a half miles to the Raven County plant. You know, when you're looking at about twenty dollars a foot for a horse mane, it adds up. So it's four point three million dollars. Right now, the service area is two hundred and thirteen units. If you look at the different type of potentials for funding, which the service, conveniently talking about service delivery strategy, nobody in the county is eligible for funding until that can get worked out. But there's several agencies that would be great for funding. Appalachian Regional Commission, you can get up to seventy percent matching, up to six hundred thousand dollars in a grant. And this is a great project for ARC funds, because ARC wants to get the Appalachian citizens on par with the rest of the nation. And so you can have a great selling point, I'm just saying, we can bring in jobs, we can bring in hotels. The Appalachian citizens, there is sewer overflow, we need this. ARC would love this project. One Georgia is another possibility, they are five hundred thousand. So we can find these different ways to fund it, even through in potentially having the county pay for the repaving. And that leaves, so of our four point three, so six hundred thousand for ARC, five hundred thousand for One Georgia, having Splosor County contribute to repaving, where these sewer lines are going to have to go, because it's tight, and it'll probably have to go in the road, and so have the county pay for repaving. That would leave two point, almost two point five million dollars. And if you look at a JIFA loan, JIFA is Georgia Environmental Funding Agency, or Authority, they have low-interest loans, right now I believe it's somewhere around two percent for a thirty-year loan. That would leave about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, plus treatment costs, plus cost to operate a system. It would be a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year to come up with to pay for the sewer system. For two hundred and thirteen units, that's about seventy dollars a month. There's, you know, so it's different ways to think about seventy dollars a month. It's a high fee, but it is not a completely unusual fee. But if you think about long-term, a hotel coming in, that could raise fifty thousand a year in hotel motel taxes. Other, you know, the fifty-five-plus community comes in, there's lots of tax money that can come in, just with sales tax of people coming in. There's, the property values may come up. It was interesting to look at property values of the county as a whole compared to Sky Valley. And the county as a whole has come back up to the levels that the pre-recession were, but Sky Valley has not. And, you know, there's several reasons for that. The county has more places to grow, more, more places for houses to be built.
Well, the county's had a lot of growth over the last four years too, downtown Platteville and everything, whereas we haven't. So I saw your graph, and it's pretty clear that's what-
Yes. Probably most of that. You know, so, but you, I would, I would suspect that housing prices would increase with, you know, some shops coming in, some restaurants, even just a convenience store where you can get some groceries. I think, I think a lot of citizens within Sky Valley would benefit from having just amenities. You know, it's, it's up to, it's a big decision on how to fund four point three million dollars. It's a big project.
There's no question. In doing this, do, should we anticipate being able to task some of the guys who want to develop, to funding some of the upfront costs before they develop?
I don't think that's a bad idea, yeah.
You know, it seems to me some of that deficit, if you wanna come in here and build a hotel, we'd be happy to have you, however. Is that, is that done? I know it is in big cities, but-
Yeah, I mean, there's several, you know, there's several ways to go about it. If you wanna, looking at raising sewer, our water rates by, I think, five percent would get twenty thousand a year. There's several ways to consider how to fund it. Maybe perhaps pay general fund, until, you know, because you're putting in the sewer system to attract. So right now, there's only two hundred and thirteen units, but when a hotel comes in, there's gonna be revenue from hotel, there's gonna be revenue from little shops coming in. The sewer area, the service area, there's more room for more condos perhaps to grow out. So just at first, seventy thousand a month would be high.
Well, essentially, you're attached to a feasibility study. Sewer is feasible, if we can afford it, find ways to afford it, that's bottom line. And that's where, I guess we've been elected, our predecessors and those that follow us, to find ways to encourage business, hotels come in, and maybe, we may have to provide incentives to them, rather than them essentially paying upfront. So all that has to be considered, and I guess we're the stuckies to do that. So all that has to be considered, and I guess we're the stuckies to do that.
When you're, you're talking about building a sewer line down to where it's huge.
Yeah.
Where the main red line, the main line, is that correct?
You might show that a little trace of your finger.
So there is another map. This was just looking at Sky Valley. So the orange will be the gravity sewer, the manholes, serving everything. This purple is the lift station with this green line being the force main. And the force main will just be underground. You can't tie to a force main. It's literally just going to be transporting the wastewater. Comes up to the red line and starts going downhill. And it goes downhill for five miles.
I was involved in this 20 years ago. And you know, you're talking about that kind of stuff. What we were looking at at the time was to build a modest treatment facility. And it wasn't built to anything like the kind of ones you're talking about.
So that's part of the report, and I want to say that one was eight million. And it has the, there's several reasons why that, it probably was not so costly years ago, but it's now more costly now. Your trout stream's up here, so APD is very picky about what can be discharged into the trout stream. So you can't, we can't get a discharge permit. You can't treat the wastewater to discharge into a stream. The best option would be land applying it, you treat it to an extra level, and you can land apply, it's basically, it's reused water being sprayed on the golf course. It seems like a perfect fit, right, golf course uses water being sprayed. But because you have to treat it so high, it would, and your flows are so low. When you have such low flows, it costs more. The cost to treat per gallon just escalates with the lower flows. And since you don't have a lot of space to do the huge modular, probably ugly treatment facility, it would be recommended to do what's called a membrane filter. It would be committed, it would be small, it would treat a really high capacity, but it's costly. And I believe the cost estimate was eight million because of just, it's just a tough situation. You know, I live in Gwinnett County. Gwinnett can treat very, you know, the cost to treat wastewater is so low because there's so much up here. It's not a whole lot. 213 units is not. I think the beginning would be less than 30, 30,000 gallons a day, which is a very small amount. Most, a lot of facilities you're looking at, one million gallons, one MGD plants, and this would be a .03, .003, it's small.
Well, this system that you show on here goes all the way down to the county.
Yes.
As opposed to going to Dillard, is that, that's also a possibility?
That is a possibility. Either or, you know, it would change different out here. It, it could, would work either way. The cost would be very, so hard. Yeah, the hard part is just this really long five and a half mile force main.
Question, I question, you showed a timeline in here for doing this. As I recall, when Harrison Merrill was getting ready to read, read a lot of this call for us, it seemed it took him something like three years for him to get all permitted. What's the anticipated time for us to get permitted to do this thing?
Permitting, it's six months. There's nothing too crazy about this. There's a few stream crossings, and that's just going through Army Corps. That takes two months. The permitting's not, permitting would be a lot of our plants.
Going downhill and all that.
That's just some erosion control. It's just a little bit land disturbance. That's why.
Road crossings and such.
Yeah, and actually, it'd be all county road crossings. It would be through the county. Design, design would take a while, longer than I think a typical project. And I think construction, you would estimate a year. I think the majority of time for this type of, this project would be getting the ARC funds, the One Georgia, coming up with the funding. That can take a while. After you submit an application, it can take about a year before those funds are actually in hand. And it depends on...
Do you have to wait for the funding to get the, do the permitting?
You don't, but that's always a question. Do you want to move ahead before you get the funding? That's always a inner-city discussion decision.
This sewer line, it wouldn't follow 246. It's just cut through the valley and cut through the trees and... I'm going to cut everywhere. I put the Florida Keys in. That art sewer line follows the road.
There, it's a, it's a utility road. It's a gravel utility road. There, there's a night, it's actually almost a perfect path that we're taking.
That allows you to do this.
Yes, there's a gate.
I'll do that. Okay.
Yeah, it's actually pretty ideal for construction.
So you're not having to cut down trees or anything for the most part, okay.
Yeah, it's a gravel road, so we just stick to one side of the gravel road.
And you're going to the county, so...
Yes.
And did you look at going to the facility down there?
In Dillard. It would work either way. Both have capacity. The reason we kind of show it going is just because of the relationship with Raven County right now. Raven would prob, or, you know, the county, the authority would probably, there's a chance that they would be taking over because of this whole communication with taking over water and sewer system. They showed an interest, so that's, they could go to Dillard easily.
Wouldn't it be shorter and less expensive to go to Dillard? And I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Dillard's got a lot of unused capacity.
They both have enough capacity, so either way. I mean, once we get down the mountain, it's either there or here. It's, they're both showing in the red. It's not...
I think we're more likely to get participation out of the county than we would be Dillard, as far as any kind of funding, because they have Splos to...
And they have a lot of capacity, and they work on the wastewater.
Corinne, can you, when we met with the county, we talked briefly about another alternative for not doing the whole project yet, but doing, getting it ready for, to kind of pitch to a developer. Can you briefly talk about?
Yeah, yes. So another option, excuse me, while we're pulled out of the cost estimates, if there's a capacity, I would, just to kind of phase it. Try to start off with a skeleton sewer system, which would include the force main and the lift station way over here with no pumps in it. No pumps in it. It would just be a skeleton lift station. It would have a funnel in it, and then the force main would be in. So that Sky Valley then could approach businesses and say, "We have sewer. Are you interested?" So that you can at least say you have sewer, and then get the businesses, a hotel to come in and put in, and pay for the rest of the lift station and play for their gravity sewer, just as an attempt to get it moving without doing the whole project. And that split, it would be 1.7 million. I'm sorry, am I looking at the phase one? Yeah, phase one, 1.7 million to just do phase one, where you actually have no sewer customers. But you can at least say there's sewer service in the county. I think you could probably get 600,000 for ARC for that, 500,000 for One Georgia. And then that's, you're then left with, I'm sorry, 600,000 left to pay. And you don't have any sewer customers, so it can't be a sewer bill. So it's to figure out who pays for the rest. But a phased approach might, might be more manageable so that now you can, you can push private industries and developers to put money into it.
Looked at all the sources of grant money and so forth that we could possibly get, and there's not another, that's brilliant.
I know, right? This sound like, that would be nice, right? Those are really the two best for this. There are other grant monies out there, but it's more to serve low-income citizens. It's not for a regular sewer system. As far as the loan goes, we looked at, no, we didn't just look at Jifa. USDA has a loan program, low-interest loan program that's 40 years. But, and they have a grant loan. But because of the situation of Sky Valley, you would not qualify for any type of grant. You're too well off. USDA only wants to help just rural poor communities. Yeah, yeah. I don't know, 1.1 billion, sounds not too bad.
Bob, could I ask you a question for a moment? There's an assumption that I'm hearing that last year, Chip knows that I was asked, I'm, my name is Steve Powell. I live on West Sugar Bush. I'm a seasonal resident. I was asked last year to check into the feasibility and the viability of getting a hotel up here. I've been in the hotel industry for 25 years. I work with 48 different management companies across the nation. I have some 1100 hotels that I service. And I know some people. No brag there, just fact. And when I went to the people that I could go to and say, "Hey, I got a chance. I got an opportunity. I got a place." The single biggest issue was sewer. The second single biggest issue was something that we haven't addressed yet, and that was year-round demand drivers. Year-round demand drivers. Why do I want to spend the night in a hotel in Sky Valley? Is there skiing? Nope. Is there, you know, I don't want you to go through every little point.
Plus the gas station.
But break-even occupancy costs in a hotel are around 62% to 65% occupancy. That's daily. That's every day. And if you don't have a reason for that hotel to be here and expect and get that occupancy, then secondly, we talked about along the way, what about a restaurant? Well, then the club came to mind. There's the thought that one could feed the other. There's, I just wanted to put on the table the fact that simply because we say we have sewer or we have sewer capability, that we're, that we're going to have a hotel you go, "Yeah, I'm in." Or, "Yeah, how much do you need?" Because if there's not the demand drivers, the year-around demand drivers, I couldn't get a single one of my close contacts to say, "Well, tell me more." As soon as I told them I couldn't establish the year-round demand drivers, they said, "Well, maybe we can talk to the hotel." I just want to put that on the table. Don't expect a hotelier to go, "Woo-hoo!" because it's not going to happen that quickly.
And you get employees at the club.
I'm just trying to be real. That's all I'm trying to say.
Another consideration is unless we have cooperation from Harrison Merrill, there is no place to put any of the things you have said you would like to bring. What you may want to think about is the fact that there are failing septic systems. That is something that is right now, and that is pretty much year-round, even though it's not in full all year-round. So if we look at something that can accommodate what our condos now need with the opportunity to grow in the future, that might be a solution. Instead of saying, as Steve has pointed out, that we're going to bring in a hotel. No, we're not. And don't kid yourselves. You're not.
But we can't really connect the condos without doing the full project, though. There's not a, the phase one doesn't connect the condos.
But is, is there a smaller system that could service just the existing condos?
Which we had in the heat.
Yeah. Or is that the thing you looked at and you said, "It's too expensive to do?"
Yeah, that's the problem. It's not, it's, it's not easy just to treat a little bit of sewer inexpensively. And that's how this crazy, you know, five and a half mile of force main is actually more practical and least expensive. And perhaps 10 years ago, it might have been cheaper, but the cost of concrete in itself has gone up so much that plant work, it's hard for us to estimate plant work. We're usually off after we do an estimate and we find, and the design's finished and we bid it. It's usually above what we even expected, even though we knew to expect high. Plant work's just gotten expensive.
If I could just flip my comment just a little bit. I was all about hotels. Well, what about extended, you know, senior living? What about other avenues of development that do represent living daily as opposed to occupancy of a hotel? Those kinds of things tied around what I think is a magnificent golf course and club, all tied in. I've always, at every meeting, I've always brought up, well, how can we make the golf course the focus and draw everything to the golf course and keep feeding the golf course? And again, I don't think a hotel will do it right away, but maybe extended living, senior living, the villages comes to mind in Florida, that kind of a thing where it's all close by and people have the golf course and they have tennis and they have pool and they have all the little things around it. That's just a little add-on with that.
Yeah, and I think Wes kind of what she said, the 55 and over, but when we talked about it, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, and for the 213 units, I, I don't know the extent of system failures. I don't know exactly how bad it is, but perhaps $70 a month? Sounds like a really cheap option compared to, I have no place to put my sewer now that my septic system has failed.
Mr. Kenzel, how many 200 customers you're talking about have failing systems? If there's only 20 of them, you know, the other 100, hey, you're going to find it hard pressed to spend $70 a month.
I read the feasibility study today that is available on, on the internet. I, I can't say that I, that I mastered it, but I had a couple of impressions. The first one for you is, I got the impression this was more of an engineering feasibility study than it was an economic feasibility study or a political feasibility study.
Yeah, I would, yeah, that's a good way to put it. It is. But it all goes hand in hand because it doesn't matter what kind of engineering you can do if you can afford it. So that's why we added a lot of feasibility interest in it. How can it be afforded and what options are there? There's no, there's no set rules for like how to afford it.
And I thought that was a great basis for us to discuss the project among ourselves. One of the problems that I saw political feasibility-wise is, you know, how do we, how do we get everybody in Sky Valley on board if we decide this is something that is in fact good for Sky Valley? And I see the force line is going right up, right up Ridge Pole Drive before it gets down to Rescue Lane and starts going downhill. So that Ridge Pole is really going to be torn up for I don't know how long. And yet, all the folks on Ridge Pole, I couldn't tell if they were going to, I could tell that they weren't going to be able to attach to the force line because that's not the way it works. But I couldn't tell if those folks that were going to suffer more than anybody else were going to be getting residential service along the way. So, so for a lot of those folks, that would, that could, that could be a downside. The other distinction that I could see is the service area is fairly small. And there's a lot of people outside of the service area who would only benefit from, you know, being citizens of Sky Valley, this is good for the rest of Sky Valley and for bringing people in and so on and so forth. So could they, hopefully, a lot of those folks would be able to see the overall interest of Sky Valley rather than, than just the fact that they're not going to get hooked up. So there's that division of, why should we pay for, we're out of the service area, why should we pay for the problems of the guys in the condos or the lodge or whatever whose septic system is old? And why don't just let them pay for their problem, just like we're going to pay for our septic system if it goes out and we're outside the service area? So those are, those are some of the issues that I see us trying to figure out as we go forward. The other issue is that, and I know that this has been discussed, sewers have been discussed in small circles for years and years and years in Sky Valley. But I've never heard the argument put out... heard the argument put out in public for everyone to reflect on as to what kind of Sky Valley it is that we want. Right now, we are primarily a residential community, and we have a very high residential quality of life. How important is it for us to have a hotel or that would bring people into Sky Valley so we have more people looking at Sky Valley and potentially buying homes here? As opposed to senior center, which sounds a lot more feasible because we're gonna have people there permanently? So what's our vision for Sky Valley? Is it to include commercial or is it to stay residential? And this is the part that I don't think has ever been publicly discussed in Sky Valley, and I think it's something that we oughta, we oughta, we oughta get on the table if we're thinking about going forward with this. So thank you, that's all I have.
Can I ask one more question? The Valley View condos in that area, is it in the, in that little close area where we have apparently some significant problems? How do we, in that area in there? That looks like, to me, just glancing at it and not knowing the feasibility of it, that if we could reasonably, I think, put in a sewer system that could feed the golf course from, I don't know how much, how much water it takes to do that from there, but they have the elevation and everything else to come down the hill and go into the treatment facility. I don't know how big the treatment facility would have to be in order to do that. And as you said, the trout screens and all that can't discharge in, but is that even in effect if it goes through the golf course first, the front screen? Because we have fertilizing and all that stuff that we do, but obviously it goes.
Yeah, I'm, I don't know sure if I get what you're thinking, but basically, it would be called a land application system, it's a reused land application system. The wastewater would be treated to such a high level to make it safe enough to put it on the grass, and you still don't want children coming through these sprinklers. But it takes a lot of, a lot of treatment, and it takes staff to operate a plant like that, which is another thing that drives up the cost, is to, you know, the cost to operate a gravity sewer system and look at a lift station, I don't know, the city would have to hire new staff to do that unless they're all, you know, their staff's already overbooked. But when you have that type of facility, you have to have staff on-site all the time. It's, it's, and it's unfortunate that it's not something that's just easily solved with just a smaller scale system. And it appears that basically, the soils just perhaps are not great up here for doing the septic systems, because either that or it's just too tight. It's rock. So rock and dust doesn't absorb water very well, or wastewater. I think that was all I had to say unless anybody has a question.
Is there any more questions? Okay, well, thank you very much for coming.
I have a spreadsheet about it somewhere. No, it would be in the office, do you have? Okay, if you have the report, he's asking about the, the customers, the 213 customers. There is somewhat of a breakdown of them, page eight. Okay, page eight kind of has a breakdown of them. And those, these numbers are from their water customers, so we actually have usage history on what we could expect for sewer. They're very low users.
Only a year part of the year.
Yeah, it's very low users. We typically expect about 3,000 to 4,000 gallons a month, and I think it's something like 1,300, it's really low until certain months ago.
That's because they're only...
Yes.
We appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next item is, we want to discuss is pavilion reservations rules and staging. We'll start with you, Al. I'm sorry, it's a second, and staging, it's first the pavilion? The pavilion, you have any thoughts? Actually, I don't. My thoughts on it is that we, number one, we gotta finish it, but we want to finish it not by the city, but by the people of, of Sky Valley. We have checked and we can get picnic tables at a discount from Home Depot. I'm figuring about, we have two over there now that we cleaned up, and, and we can get eight more at less than $100 apiece. We've got to wire up, place is not wired yet for lights. We need water brought in, water grade behind it, but I mean, we gotta have a sink and so forth. So those are the few of the things that, to finish up the project, that we need, and we'd like to go to the city and ask for donations and so that we can finish it. And I think we should finish it before we really open it up. And as far as cost and so forth, it's built for the people of Sky Valley, their guests. So the only charge that I would recommend would be a $50 deposit for cleanup, they cleaned it up, they get the $50 back. And that's my view of it.
This has been an estimate made of how much we need to facilitate the pavilion's work with the water, the tables, no?
Nope.
So we need to, that's...
I don't, I just, I think if we start getting donations, we know we need at least eight, probably a couple thousand dollars probably to do it.
But the POA made a donation to the city last year of $2,000 that was to be used for portable equipment for the park. I cannot make any decisions, but I can tell you that when our board meets, I would be happy to invite you to come talk with them, and let's see if that $2,000 can be used toward your, whatever you need, and with the POA board be willing to make an additional contribution.
Thank you. And in case you want to know, I had that in mind to get you after the meeting.
I figured you did.
You ought to keep it friendly.
And it's a logical partnership.
Because there, Richard Boyle, and I agree with you, if you ask the citizens, we built the pavilion or the post office facility and the other by donations. We all contributed, we all got our name, which was scratched off several times, but we got our names put on the board. And Ken Kaplan, who, God rest his soul, good, good guy, he and I, anyway, several of us painted the benches, and I'd be willing to do that again, and also make a donation of at least a table, then you could put a little something on the table. So I think it's a good idea. But how those things were built was through donations.
Debbie McAfee, the other cities that I've insured in my history, they usually, if they're going to be alcohol present at a birthday party or whatever, they charge, they apply for a permit and then charge a little bit more, like a $25 fee if it was gonna be alcohol, but I don't know if we want to go that direction or not, just a thought.
Always alcohol.
Under the table. I'm just showing you an example because I insured many cities.
The two example par, uh, city parks that were used here, both the rules and policies of both of them restrict all of that. In fact, even restrict party balloons and any declarations.
Really?
And that was the two that were provided as an example, and of course, alcohol is out of the question.
The, the ones I provided is just talking points, basically.
My point is, and I was surprised to find out, that the rules for these two examples were almost verbatim.
I've got a question for Doug on that. What, what kind of a liability would you foresee if we, if you did have a note, you know, if you just allowed alcohol there freely, basically?
Yeah, now, you would definitely want that to be part of the permitting process so that person renting it would, would, if there is gonna be alcohol, then they'd probably need to pay a little bit extra to cover some of the, some of the rest. But then you would also want to have like a liability waiver, saying that the city in no way checks on what's responsible for what goes on. And the, the examples that are in your packet, I mean, those are just examples, you can take some of those and use it or throw them away, I mean, we can do anything we want.
Mayor, Mayor, could we have Doug write us up a, a waiver and documents that we'd need to, we would need to give somebody to have a party at the pavilion, you know, somebody, we could have a packet for somebody that could fill out.
You can do that.
So are we having to?
Write it up?
That's an important question.
The POA will be in charge of it.
No, 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 we will not, absolutely not.
They got their problems.
And do we want to do, is it gonna be just deposit for anybody that wants to use it? I mean, I know we built it for the citizens and their guests, but that doesn't mean that somebody else outside of the city is gonna want to use it. Right. So we need to make that distinction too, if we want to, you know.
My input would be that's open to the public, because you, you'd have people coming up here vacationing, and they might want to have a get-together to rent three or four houses or something. It should be available.
And we've already got requests for, to reserve it for a rehearsal dinner, so, you know, we just need to figure out the process that we're gonna want to use to do that.
That's great.
Bob, could you write us some, some proposal?
On like a rental acquisition?
And anything else that you want to put in to find out, okay, that leave it, that would be covered?
I haven't done this before.
To do that.
Well, the picnic tables, is that what you converted, about 80 bucks or so?
Yeah.
What, what's their construction material?
Eight bucks?
Eight.
I said 100.
Less than.
Well, they're, they sell it for 119, and we can get them right around 80 dollars.
But what is the material?
They're pressure-treated, I think it's a pine or white spruce.
I, I would vote right against that in a heartbeat, because that may, that requires maintenance, they rot after a period of time, they warp in some cases, there, there's this artificial wood that's out, and there's, and there's other, they're a little bit more expensive, but you, I don't think you want to create something that continues to cost you something in terms of its maintenance.
Well, we've had four of them down at the waterfall, and we just brought them up, pressure-treated them and stained them, and the stain was donated by Al, his wife, and they look great, and they've been sitting outdoors. Now, here, they're gonna be all under cover, so, and the ones at the pavilion, that, I don't know how old they are, because they're the original, probably, I think, that up there now at the...
They've been out there for a while.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just looking back on the incident in Florida where we had to throw them all away within two years and go by the good stuff.
I don't, the, the type of wood is not that, and it's pressure-treated and so forth, so...
May I make a recommendation, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That you appoint a small committee, maybe have some participants from the public on the committee to address this quickly, because there's already people wanting to use that, and so we can get specific estimates of what's needed and the cost, and how much we're gonna need by what time, and to help work on procedures and the approval.
Well, I think we can do that, $10.
I think that'd be...
And a list of items would make it a lot easier, I think, for people to donate if they knew, hey, I'm participating in getting 10 picnic tables and this, you know what I'm saying, give up. So it's not piecemeal, come up with the whole, whatever it is you need, and then ask for the donations, what's your thought on that?
He's gonna need the list, just as he said, oh yeah, he's gonna need the list.
Well, this is, this is why we're having workshops, to work out, and we get together more, we won't vote anything about anything today, but we get...
You won't turn anything all day?
My name is Mr. Big Mouth and I live on Deborah's lane.
Don't put that in the paper, please.
Well, I just wanted to say, I, I support wholeheartedly your, your suggestion to go out and we get donations and everything. This is, I've, I've been amazed in the time I've lived in Sky Valley at the level of volunteerism and people's willingness to contribute to things for the greater good. Secondly, I just wanted to, to say I support everything you're gonna do to make sure that this is a first-class facility. It's a first-class pavilion down there, this is a first-class community, and all the public facilities that we do ought to be first-class.
I agree.
And, and finally, if, if it, if it comes down to still needing a few more dollars, I think that providing public parks for the use of our citizens and guests is a, is a clear core function of city government, and that if we have to take it out of our budget or whatever we have to do to pay for it, we should, we should do that. I don't think we're gonna have to.
Well, I, I agree, and I will talk to two or three people beside Richard here, work with me, and we'll come back to the council with a complete list, cost and whatever.
All right.
Any further questions?
Bob, are you looking at setting up a reservations policy for the pavilion for certain size groups or for certain events in the future, as opposed to, I have my daughter visiting us and we're gonna go just sit down there and have a little picnic, a picnic table someday?
Okay.
So, I mean, are you, are you gonna outline what... I mean, you've got, are you, are you gonna outline what particular situations you need to have reservations for and need to go to the city manager, you know, as far as getting that?
Well, reservations for, for this will probably, and this is still just talking here, will go through the city, and there'd be a log kept, so that, uh, few, and, I don't know, notices will be kept, so that people can know that this is gonna be taken up on this certain day, so that not anybody can walk in there. But normally, uh, I think we can work all these little things out. You know, as I said, most of this stuff now is all trial and error for, for this group and for the project that we're undertaking. And, uh, so we try to do the best we can, and then if we make changes, we make changes. And if it works out, then we have to put a notice down on the board down there, so that people can know that it's occupied for that. Uh, we might have to do that with pickleball, when people come up to play. That we might have to, if it continues to build, uh, we might have to put a schedule there, so that people will have to schedule their time. We just wait and see, and we'll work on it.
And both, both of these kind of imply that it's a sole use, in other words, if you and your dog are gonna have a picnic down there, and Melanie and I wanted to sit at the table on the other end and have a picnic, then this kind of implies that, hey, if you want to reserve the whole place, other than that, I guess it's wide open.
Yeah, first come, first served.
Well, yeah, as long as it's room, move over.
Yeah.
Are we taking over, is the city taking over operation of the pavilion?
No, this is the pavilion next to the.
You're still, you're still. All right, now for the questions on that, we'll get down to the Code of Ethics. And, uh.
There we go.
Yeah, you can have that, and this is one I'll bring in, I'll share that with you.
The Code of Ethics is a law sent to the mayor of Good Game, uh, back in November, and nothing was acted on it. And it belongs to things that basically, uh, I used to be decided for the ethics ordinances, Board of Ethics. And it says to select, you've got three choices. The first one, Board of Ethics of the city shall consist of three residents of the city, one appointed by the mayor, one appointed by the city council, and the third appointed by the mayor approved by the majority of the city council. The others are very lengthy. My recommendation on the first one would be to have the, uh, the very first one that I read, where, to me, where we're just small, to keep everything as simple as possible, and the smallest number of people involved. The Ethics Board is just what it says, it's a, has to do with the ethics of the running of the city. And I think Linda can give you a better explanation.
Sure. Um, the city has been, through the Georgia Municipal Association, involved in their certified City of Ethics program. So we previously adopted an ethics, um, resolution or ordinance, and it's time to renew that with the Georgia Municipal Association in order to remain a certified City of Ethics. So that's kind of the background of it. So in that, um, there's, the, the main things is serve others and not themselves, be independent, impartial, and responsible, use resources with efficiency and economy, treat all people fairly, use the power of their position for the well-being of their constituents, and create an environment of honest, honesty, openness, and integrity. So within the ordinance, there's a, there's of course the definite definitions, um, the purpose, encourage high ethical standards and official conduct by the, your city officials, so this is the city officials of the city, establishing guidelines for ethical standards of conduct for all such officials by setting forth those acts or actions that are incompatible with the interests of the city, require disclosure by such officials of private financial or other interest in matters affecting the city, and serve as a basis for disciplining those who refuse to abide by those terms. So, um, there's, it goes through what's prohibited by city officials, um, a conflict of interest, it sets up this Board of Ethics, so, um, it would be four, um, let's see. So if they go with alternative A, then the Board of Ethics would consist of three residents of the city, so three to, three total people, one appointed by the mayor, one appointed by the city council, and the third appointed by the mayor approved by the city council. And then it goes through, um, how complaints are received, and that'll be the next thing that they decide how they want to handle the complaints. And, you know, how, what the process is for the Board of Ethics to hear a complaint and when, in case of an election. Do you have any questions on kind of what we're doing? Okay.
Who would determine, uh, what violation is committed by?
So somebody makes a complaint, and that complaint, um, will, and what they're fixing to talk about, how, who will receive that complaint, and then it's sent to the person that the complaint is made against.
Who will receive the complaint?
Um, not me, but.
There are other options, and one of the options is to refer to the municipal court of the city, which I think would be a proper place.
Yes, I, I have a question there, so then would the municipal court act as the board?
Well, that's one of your alternatives. So if you wanted the municipal court to handle it, then they would get the complaint, they would hear the complaint, and they would make the ruling on it.
So the complaint could come to the city clerk or have a minute.
Well, it comes to the court.
Which is Elisa, so, I mean, it's gonna come to either.
I mean, if it's a bunch of crap, then it won't be.
Right, whoever it is, whether it's the municipal court judge or this board, um, then they would, you know.
I think it's all over higher authority than us.
The board is required, or is, one of these options is required, is that?
The board or the judge, that's our option.
I agree.
The judge is always better.
Yeah, we're, we're such a close-knit city that, I mean, three people trying to determine, and they either may or may not have a positive or negative opinion, and it can be biased, and if we throw it to the court, we don't make enemies, best way to keep friends is let the court decide.
What have we been doing?
Well, I, how many ti, how many times have we had any problems? None.
No, I mean, it's not something that hopefully is gonna get used, but it's, but it's.
Something to have to do for the.
It's a good thing to have in place, and, um.
How was it set up previously when this was done, when y'all did it the first time?
Um, I don't think it was ever set up, honestly. No.
Doug, what's your take on this, as opposed to alternative A, which has been proposed, or the second proposal is alternative D with municipal court? The, there's two sides to that, those particular options, both of whom have merit, but, uh, from a legal standpoint, where do you think is the better way to go, if there was something that needed to be done?
Well, from a legal standpoint, all of the options are, are legal, and y'all can choose whichever one you decide.
Workability?
The workability would probably be the municipal court, just because you have one judge, one person hearing it, you don't have to work around and go through people and having their schedules, on one side and things of that nature. But that's the bit I want to go on.
Wasn't it an ethical thing when somebody supposedly voted in two different elections? Wouldn't that have been something?
No, that, that's a state law.
Oh, state law.
So that's different, this is more about our coun, you know, they are in council.
Well, there have been questions over the years about, were, whether a council person had a conflict of interest.
Right, so that would be against.
And that has come up many times over the years. Generally, voters decided whether or not that was a conflict, and I, and I think that's the right way.
In the future.
Yeah. But anyway, so there are.
So this would be, yeah, something that came up.
I still think the judge calls an idea, the judge is the best way.
Well, it's the less political avenue to go, I mean, like, like, you know, they said, it's, you know, very political if you get three people that aren't on one side or the other.
Both the Republicans all volunteered to be the.
She's the federal court clerk, Scott Allen.
Oh, Bob, I need a little civics lesson from Linda, I didn't know we had a municipal court.
We do. We have a, a judge, Judge Sneed, Robert Sneed, he's a traveling judge, so he goes to just about every other city in Raven County and a lot further out than Raven County, so he's, um, but, and Elisa is our court clerk.
How often do we have court and?
What's it cost?
What, what does it do?
What's it cost?
Um, what does it cost to have the judge?
Does it cost to say, I have a complaint, you know, most courts charge a fee.
Oh, no, 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 there's no fee to file a complaint. Um, we charge, I mean, the, the judge charges us two hundred and fifty dollars every time he comes to court. We have regular courts set up every other month, um, but he may, we may tell him he doesn't need to come if we don't have anything, so. And he hears our traffic citations, our code enforcement violations. Y'all, y'all have never been ticketed in Sky Valley, that's good. But it does have.
Another discussion between us.
All right, so, so back to the alternatives of the board.
You're talking about the next set.
No, the first set, let's go back to it, because you first said alternative A was suggested. Now we're talking about the municipal courts, are we, are we moving it to D?
I like the vote on that D, but yeah, I like that.
Well, I've got, we've got to.
You have to decide.
We have to put it in the, you know.
Oh, I get you.
Put it together for next weekend.
I say is D, and D on the next one.
You good on that, Mayor?
About D?
I hear D, and, yeah.
What is D?
D is the judge.
D is the municipal court clerk.
All right, cool. D on the.
Section seven.
So then, for the receiving of the complaints, it would be filed with the clerk of municipal court, which is Elisa.
Yeah.
And then she would send it to the city official that was being, her officials that were being charged in the complaint, and within seven days, and then of course, um, you know, schedule the judge, or get it to the judge.
There'll be D on. The second. D all round.
Now, the, the last part of it is, um.
You only have two.
No, there's three. But the last part of it is. There's, with the Board of Ethics, um, some elected officials raise concerns about potential misuse of the ethics complaint process for political purposes during an election. So we have to choose whether we want to accept, accept complaints anytime, or if we want to, um, close complaints period during qualifying and through the election, or if we want to accept them, but then hold them until after the election. So those are your last three.
I say alternative B.
Anytime, or, no, alternative A is, um, not, close it.
If you choose alternative B, then basically anybody who wanted to do it for political purposes can achieve their goal, because by, even filing it while you're in the middle of running puts a cloud over the candidate that may or may not be true. And section A says it cannot be filed during the point of the election.
That's why, I mean, not, A is what I.
Director Comey in there. Director Comey coming out a few days before the election was certainly a cloud. Whether he was happy with the results or not, it was certainly a cloud.
Well, actually, alternative B here does just that, and that's why I'm saying A.
And I agree with A.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Attorney. And then Rules, Procedure, Ordinance thirteen dash oh three.
So maybe I can fill in, you know, some questions that I have on this. I've had a chance to take a look at the, the most recent charter, which was in two thousand nine eight. And then I have a copy of the ordinance thirteen dash zero three, where the council went in and changed the charter, it was like section two point two two, on the procedures on how to run, uh, the meetings. It's my understanding y'all either want to amend that ordinance from two thousand thirteen or repeal it completely, but what, don't you like about it, or what do you want to change, or what do you want to add to it?
I personally want to see section five and six, gone.
Does anyone have section five and six, looks like sections three through nine did not come out on.
Here you go.
What I got here, not.
It's just the last section.
So section five, mayor, the mayor of the city council as presiding officer is responsible for the orderly conduct of the meeting. In order to fulfill this duty, the mayor shall enforce the rules of procedure that are adopted. Mayor shall be impartial and conduct the meetings in order to secure our manner. Mayor is part of the legislative body and is authorized to vote on all issues before the council.
So one of the issues was, is, is the mayor voting, and Bob said he's not going to. But, but it's my understanding the city charter, you know, identifies the mayor as part of the legislative body.
D, I have the charter here, can you tell me where you see that? I thought that is changed.
It was intended to be.
I mean, I thought it was changed to get the mayor to vote a lot of that.
Right, that's right, yeah, but that, that wasn't it.
It wasn't the original charter.
The intent was for the mayor just to have a veto power.
Because as I read the two thousand eight charter.
Right.
Um, it lists the mayor as the chief executive of the city, and I don't see anything in here that says that the mayor is part of the legislative body, which would be the council.
It does.
It doesn't, he said.
It's section two point one zero here, it says, yeah. City council composed by the mayor and by council members, and this is about legislative authority. And that's where we're running into.
Yeah, that, that's mainly, things are tied with each other.
The word that we're discussing almost went to back up and verify what Al just read, to solidify the, that the mayor did have the right to vote.
That's what, that's what happened, mostly, and once we figured that out, um, because like I said, it wasn't, that really wasn't the intent when we, it happened that way, but, um, once we did figure that out, then we needed to change the rules of procedure to match the charter.
And there was also in, in section two point one two, section C two, when they're referring to a vacancy, the mayor shall become vacant, then it's the president of the council who comes, steps in and loses voting privileges.
Right, right.
Right, right.
Right.
Yeah.
But as a council member, the mayor and the council members all have the, are part of the legislature and have voting rights.
And then I would argue that when you get to section three point one and three point one one, it talks about the powers and duties of the mayor, doesn't say anything about voting, which is that's a more specific. Part of the charter. So I mean, you got conflicts there, so, um, so I guess. So what we can do, I guess, is just, y'all tell me what you want to do. You want to let the mayor continue to have this ability to vote? Do you want to take that away? And we can amend the charter, um, to do that. And we do not, because of this, we do not have to go through the legislature to do that. The whole, whole act would allow us to do it. You have to run the notice in the paper for a couple of weeks and things like that, but it's fairly simple for us.
Well, well, if everybody else is agreeing, Bob, if you are, I, I'd, I'd like to have Doug go ahead and start working on that amendment.
Okay, just make a draft, a rough draft, and send it up to us so we could take a look at it.
So to be clear, the council and the mayor agree that we want to take away the mayor's ability to vote.
To vote, but not to veto.
Not to veto.
Put veto power on it.
And do we want to make specific that the mayor is not part of the legislative body?
No.
No.
That's, here, here's where we have an issue. You tell us your advice. Trying to have a conversation in sunshine, if the mayor is part of the legislative body, then three of us can have a conversation. If he's not, then we're down to two. Well, right now, if we need to have any kind of communication, there's got to be one messenger who can meet two, two and one. You see what I'm saying? So it, it makes it very difficult, and, um, so I mean, I'm, I'm open to other ideas, but.
Can the mayor be a part of the legislative body and not?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
Right, you would think the, to be, that's the whole purpose, being in the legislative system.
But it does change the quorum, for sure.
It does.
You know, we get five instead of six.
Alright, can we, if we, if we take it out of the legislative body?
I mean.
It doesn't really change the quorum. Just bill on wall.
Council, Councilor Durka?
Yeah.
May I speak? I'm just curious, do you find this, that you're going to be having a lot of meetings behind closed doors? I mean, that's what, what, what I'm hearing, you know, that.
Okay, wait a minute. Well, I know where you're trying to turn this, and don't try to turn it that way, that's not the point.
I mean, that's what I'm hearing.
If, if you've got people operating a business, okay, and you've got, say, you've got, the, the, the sales manager and the vice president need to come up and talk about an idea, are you suggesting that they can't talk about the idea, but, before they even go into, to bring you get into the open meeting? In other words, we have to have discussions. Are you suggesting that we have no communication among ourselves, uh, behind closed doors, even two people?
No, I'm not suj-, I'm just like, it, that's what I'm, it sounds like it's so important to have this done because, you know, we are, we, we're an open community and, you know, we want to hear what's going on. And yet, if you're making decisions behind closed doors and then you're bringing them out here.
No decisions, I mean, I mean, it's a conversation. I have an idea, and I want to discuss it with the mayor, if he's consideration, and he thinks it needs to be more discussion. We then bring it to the workshop. That's why we're having the workshops that are open.
Right, and that's why that's the question.
You know, and, and there's no votes in the work, work, workshop, and, and so we have an opportunity to get the spark of something going, and then we, if it's sound, if it takes, then we bring it to the workshop. It is in sunshine, everybody's.
But right now, too, you can have a conversation, it's no big deal.
Well, also.
Right, right.
When Neil, yeah, we asked, when Neil and I kind of came up with the idea to try and employ these workshops as well, though, our idea was for the six of us to get here and talk.
Yeah.
This has turned out to be nothing more than a press conference because we're not talking amongst ourselves, we're just talking to the community. So we're really not here discussing the ideas amongst ourselves. You know, my hope was that we would have a discussion amongst the council, and then say, okay, you know, citizens, now that you've heard our conversation back and forth, do you have, you know, some say? But instead, it's become a say of the.
Community the whole time.
That's, now, right or wrong?
Your, your, that's, your opinion is okay, but your opinion flies against the sunshine law.
No, but, no, if the six of us sit here and meet, if the six of us were to sit here and meet and have a conversation amongst ourselves.
In a workshop.
Idea, in a workshop, where the audience is silent until we come to get through with our part of the discussion.
We've been doing that. We've gone through stuff, and we'll get done.
So what's different?
Nothing, never mind, y'all won't see it.
But there's still, what I'm saying is, you have an idea, you might want to talk it to another council person or two, see if, you know, you might be shot down right away, and they may bring up something that you hadn't thought of. That's all it is, is common sense, before you get to the workshop. And that's all I've talked about.
Debbie, just to clarify something for you, right now, three of us can get together anytime we want, we're not breaking the sunshine laws. If this changes, only two of us can get together. So it, it, you know, it actually makes it more open.
Okay, alright, I just needed to clarify, I didn't understand, like.
We're restricting ourselves more momentarily.
Well, let, can I ask the attorney something?
Sure.
If the mayor is not a part of the legislative body, then the mayor meeting with two people would not be a quorum, right?
That's correct.
So it's the same thing, as long as it's the mayor.
Yeah, as long as it's the mayor. So right now, three council people could get together. That wouldn't happen more so, I mean, I think it's a positive move.
But I just don't see why taking the mayor.
You're just a rough draft.
Not part of the legislative body, so I think that's a kind of ridiculous, since he's the, he's the main.
Well, the president isn't part of the legislative body either, so.
Back to my question that I had. What is the reason that this is mentioned in thirteen oh three, where it says the mayor is part of the legislative body and is authorized to vote on issues before the council? And I had a question for you, and this is, this has been, I think we're, Bob ran on, and this is what the rest of us were all concerned about. What was the need of that verbiage in thirteen oh three if the charter clearly states it, you can't?
Right, uh, obviously, I was here in two thousand thirteen, but reading from the lines, it looks like he had possibly a mayor that wanted to get more involved in voting. But yeah, whoever drafted this probably should look at the charter and see that the mayor's duties are explicitly outlined, and they do not say to vote at all.
In the chart?
Correct. The mayor has important responsibilities, but is what you probably more classically call a mayor, in the sense that they are the executive function of the, of the town, and they appoint committees and things like that, but they don't get in and vote. That's how the two thousand eight charter reads.
Well, but, but our prior attorney said, because he was part of a legislative body, he had the right to vote, just like any other council person.
Right.
So that's, but yeah, there's definitely a conflict.
There was a conflict in the two thousand eight charter, you're right. If it, yeah, I would have.
And that was not the intent. It was not supposed to have been that way. Initially, it was, he could, he could break a tie vote.
We need to get to Doug that opinion that John Dirson wrote about this, it's two or three pages.
But if we're going to remove it from the legislative body, and then it's.
Yeah, but it's still like you dug some background.
I'll, I'll take a look at it. If I had been around then, I would have suggested just removing that language of him being the legislative body.
Yeah.
But, but there may have been other reasons why they didn't do that, so.
So what on our agenda is to deal with thirteen oh three? Are we doing anything with thirteen oh three next week? Or are we going about this from the charter level?
Well, um, looking at thirteen oh three, you pinpointed section five and section six. Anything else we need to talk about, or can we just zone in on this too?
Oh, I'd like, you know, this is, you're talking zoning on thirteen oh three. Yeah, that's the only thing that was on the agenda.
Right.
But those two sections, those are those two sections of thirteen oh three.
Cause I didn't know, are we repealing the whole thing, or are we just amending the rest of the sections?
Well, we made the opinion to repeal.
Were you repealing, replace with?
Thing, but then we, we all were told we wouldn't do that.
We have to have rules.
You'd have to replace this one.
So it's just five and six that we should look at?
I'm just, I'm trying to figure out, were they have problems with section twelve, or anything like that, or not? It doesn't say.
What is it about six that you don't?
I don't know why I had six highlighted. I apologize, it's highlighted in my book, and I don't know because.
Actually.
So my thought was.
Actually, the only thing we're looking at is section five, the last.
Right, if you put a period after the word body, I think that addresses the concern.
Except for the fundamental question of.
The mayor is still part of the legislative body?
Your legislative body can vote, right? I mean, that's what I understood.
We're trying to solve, we're trying to take the mayor out of voting right for the years.
I'm, I'm not, I made the statement, I'm not going to vote on the issue.
If you're, if you're.
Alright, but if I'm, if we get a new mayor in, like you, for example, you'd want to vote for everything.
No, I, I think the mayor, I think the old system where the va, mayor was not voting person.
It wasn't till they made, changed the charter.
Exactly. Well, they didn't change by the sound of it, they didn't really change the charter.
Yeah, they changed, they made a lot of changes to the charter, and what happened.
They let part of it in.
Yeah, what happened is they, we put it in, um, the attorney drafted it, the committee wanted the mayor to have the right to vote in case of a tie. Because they were trying to avoid a situation where, you know, one of the council people wasn't going to come, and, you know, one of those things. So if it was ended in a tie, then the mayor could vote to break the tie. Well, then they, they changed their mind and said, no, we don't want the mayor to vote at all. So they took that language, the tie break language, out, but didn't take it out of the legislative body, and that's what happened.
And then under Mayor Martindales, and I was on the council, he wasn't voted, he didn't vote, he didn't think he could vote.
Right, right.
And I brought, I read, was reading the charter, reading the charter, and I brought up to the mayor and the council that the charter contradicts itself. And we need to get this resolved. And that's when it was taken to our then attorney, and he wrote a two-page opinion, because he was part of the legislative body, he should be allowed to vote. And that's where it's been.
And if we're going to amend that charter, it seems like there was something, two or three other things that were brought up a long time ago in conversations that we, if and when it ever gets amended, we need to address it, but I don't remember what they are right then.
Well, one of them is conflict is when the, uh, president of the council assumes, that, uh, there may be something with that language that may. But did I misunderstand what our attorney said, that we didn't have to go to legislature and get your home rule?
On these changes.
And for these kind of changes.
It depends on what that change is made.
But the ones that you suggested about the mayor not voting, whatever, you don't have to go to the legislature.
Yes. So what I would suggest is that we allow our, our attorney to address this, review it, and propose language that we change to, to what we've said, what we've recommended at this point for review before there's any vote.
How does that affect the quorum if you take them up?
It makes it smaller.
The quorum is two.
Two.
Except for the mayor will not count towards your quorum. So it could be the mayor in two, but it could only be two council members before you would have a, three would make a quorum.
Right, the quorum will go from four to three, right?
Right.
And so two council members can be, or two council members and the mayor can be.
And I think that's enough to have an idea, bring it to the mayor, and that'd be three, and then we bring it to workshop, and it moves forward, and we're in the sunshine.
One suggestion, if you, if for some reason you have a, a member missing, and you only have four people here and you have to tie vote, how many times do we have meetings, a decision so important, if we couldn't wait till the next time, wait till we get it?
Tabled.
Tabled, yeah, I mean, that's, why would you want to change the whole charter for something that simple?
Also, does the mayor have a veto?
To a tie.
Yeah.
Bring it up again.
He didn't have veto.
I know, he's got, poor mayor.
Yeah. And how's, how's the veto work? How, how long does the mayor have to veto it after the vote?
Ten days.
Ten days, ten days, and if he doesn't veto it, it's, uh, it's.
Can you tell me where that is?
He can approve on day one, but he can wait ten days to issue a veto, and then four council members can override the veto.
So would there be any advantage to having the mayor voting with the council on those places where the people disagree? So that he can veto it later, so that he votes and makes it a three to three tie, then it would not pass. If the mayor is voting, you would need four votes to do it, and if he, if he vetoes it, you'd need four votes. So wouldn't it be better to have him have the ability to vote so that he could knock it down while there's still time to talk about it?
I think you've been here for the last four years and watched that.
Anyway.
We don't even need to go there. Um, that, that has been the problem. I, you know, instead, in other words, in a veto, let's just take a mayor who has a veto right, just like our last mayor, he, he didn't like something, he just counseled it by making the tie vote, as you just said.
Right.
Well, that was abused, abused, and so forth. Now, if a mayor uses his veto power, at least he's not dragging down the other three council members with him. That he has the right to do it. In fact, I asked Mayor Martindale one time about the veto, and he said, I only used it one time. And his answer was, I said, well, I'm curious, what was the situation? He said, well, the, uh, council didn't want to, um, lower the millage rate. They, they were just going to keep it the same. Well, what had turned out, that didn't seem to get across to everybody in his opinion to the council, was all the property values in Sky Valley had risen. If you didn't lower the millage rate, everybody's property taxes, by sitting here saying, no, we're not going to raise your taxes, we're going to keep the same, your taxes would have gone up. So he had to ask the council to rethink this thing and come back and vote it. Now, that was what I was told.
Well, just in the matter of an expeditious execution of our, of our council duties, if the mayor was planning on voting it, voting on vetoing it, why wouldn't he, you, you know, you don't find that out until after the meeting is all over, that you don't have the ordinance that you were looking for, or the decision that you were looking for, that it's going to take four council members. If the mayor is voting, it's still going to take four council members if the mayor is opposed to it. And I'm just wondering if it isn't better to find out where the mayor stands sooner rather than later. If we find out sooner, maybe we can keep talking in the meeting and come up with a resolution or compromise instead of pushing it off to the next month.
It depends on who your mayor is. Last year, I had no information prior to sitting down.
Also, we're asking everybody else to have already made their decision beforehand, and concluded on the, on the, on the mayor beforehand, so that they know they don't have enough votes, which isn't the way the process is supposed to work.
That's right.
So I like the idea where you can, they can vote, and if you vote, the thing about it is, he vetoes it, then that's public.
Yeah.
Everybody knows he's vetoed it, and then they can decide whether they want to agree with the mayor, or they want to go with the other council. And then they come back and revisit it, and we do it all over again. If he has this pocket veto, like he says, where the guy just says, well, I break the tie, or I, I vote to, to make a tie, then you don't have that.
Why is that less public?
Well, it's, it's, because they don't, it's a three-three vote. It's published as a three-three vote. So he votes, and he doesn't get any blame. I mean, it's not like.
Doesn't three-three vote always mean that the, that the mayor?
Even so, it's, there's three guys, three guys and two guys, it's very narrow. But if, if it goes through the process, the mayor gets the publicity for having vetoed it, and then they get an opportunity to discuss it, and if they can't get four votes to overturn it, then it's okay. But if they get four votes because most of the council didn't like it, then that's okay too. too, if he gets overturned it. I mean, that's the way the government system works, just about everywhere.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Seems to be that.
I'm not.
He takes four votes.
Yeah, well, I know, but I'm not, I personally am not interested in being that expeditious. You know, I'd rather have the thought process go on for a while, if that's necessary, that's fine. And especially if the issue is that.
And in the time that I went to the newly elected officials class, I floated our situation last year and the previous years with a number of people giving the class, people from other cities and so forth, and Neil, and, and I mean, Al, and you and Paul just went through the same thing. I couldn't find a single city that had the same setup that Sky Valley had last year. There wasn't one that did. I mean, you know, most, all cities have the, the meeting we're having a week in advance, and Sky Valley didn't do. A voting mayor, nobody else that I knew of had that situation.
Well, if they had strong mayors, uh, when I went there, they raised their hands, you know, how many people have strong mayors? And three quarters of the group in that room put their hands up.
But they also had a given number of council members, I suppose.
So it, uh, a strong mayor is a title that, in my mind, that he's more indirect, if he's going to be like we've had, it's, he wants to, uh, control everything. And if you have two people or three people on the council, then you might as well say in your pocket, you can do anything you want. This change of going from a, to eliminate the mayor's voting right, uh, I'd made the statement, and I'll stick to my statement, that I'm not going to vote, only in the case of a tie. And if there is something I don't like, I'm going to veto it.
Well, you want him to vote in case of a tie, would you?
Let me finish, please. And then, so if, uh, we get to then look at, in two years, I'll be done, and Mary says that's it. So, and it's going to be that, so. Look at your mayor that you're going to vote for, and look at the way he's talking and so forth and acting, and if he's one that's going to come back in and sit down here and say, I'm not going to vote, fine. But if you have a mayor like that, that wants to control, wants to control everything, wants to micromanage everything all the way around, and that's, this, what we're doing now is going to eliminate that.
Tighten the wrist for that one.
So it's, it's really up to the people. We're going to look into it anyway, uh, we're going to have a draft, we're going to discuss this thing further, and we'll go from there. Now, and the meeting's gone long enough, and the meeting's a jerk.
I have it, I have it, thank you, I appreciate it.